Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Joint CBOC and School Board Meeting. We are waiting for quorum, so we will be back at 6:05 to see if we have quorum. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. We are still waiting for quorum, so we will check back at 6:10. We'll check back with you at 6:10 to let you know if we have quorum or not. Thank you. That's three minutes from now. We'll check back. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are going to check back in at 6:15. We are still waiting for quorum. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Oh, my camera's not on. Thank you, everyone. We are going to check back in at 6:15. We're waiting for quorum. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are still waiting for quorum. We'll check back in at 6:20. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna wait another five minutes, and I'll be back at 6:25. We're still waiting for quorum. Thank you so much for your patience. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our Joint CBOC and Board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get materials. The Board has changed public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you're attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board forum to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in to staff, they are placing the order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternating between public comment at Dejawn and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation. For each discussion and action item, the public will have 10 minutes per item, one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. We'll now move to our land, labor, and body acknowledgement. Do we have the video for the land acknowledgement? Thank you very much. That was Pinot Valley High School. We'll now move to the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Now we'll go to Agenda Item A5. That's the West Country Costa Unified School District School Board Anti-Racism Statement. The West Country Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in the direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for the growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and the oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board, individually or collectively, is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and valued member of WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequities, excuse me, racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Country Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living the standards of anti-racism in our district. I'm sorry, in our schools. Thank you very much. Dr. Hurst, will you please do roll call?
Absolutely. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Claudia Gonzalez Hoi is absent. Trustee Reckler.
Good evening. I'm present.
Trustee Christian.
Yes, good evening, present.
Trustee Phillips is absent. Brendan Dalton is absent at the time. Lorraine Humes.
Present.
And forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Ariel C.
Yes, you are correct. I'm present. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Gosdine.
Here, and Brendan is coming from the car right now.
Awesome. Lynn Johnson. Absent. Gema. Okay. She's on Zoom. And Andrea Landon.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. The CBOC member that's on Zoom, can we promote them so they'll be able to ask questions? And we're gonna wait one second for the president of CBOC to come in. Okay. All right. We're now moving on to public comment. And for the record. Brendan? Brendan? For the record, Brendan Dalton is present. Thank you so much. Okay, we're moving to Item A7, WCCUSD Public Comment. How to address the board. How to address the Board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the Board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals. Sorry. Individuals willing, individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form, or if participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Brown Act, Board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
Okay, go ahead, please.
We have Don Costly.
Ready for me? Public comment. All right, thank you. If I've said it once, I've said it a million times. That the true value of these joint meetings is that it provides an opportunity for the elected representatives of the people to sit and openly discuss items of importance with the appointed representatives of the people on the bond oversight program. There's a problem with that, though, and I hope I'm not sent to the lower reaches of health for telling such a lie. The problem is that we really aren't provided that kind of open discussion. We can only discuss things that have been placed on the agenda. As the former CBOC Chair for three years, I helped to set the agendas for these meetings. I would come in with my list of 12 to 15 proposed agenda items, and staff would explain that they would only allow no more than three topics to be discussed. And then they would decide what we would be allowed to discuss. I submitted a handful of questions for consideration tonight, and I'm pleased that we will be discussing two of them. Nonetheless, there is much more that we can discuss, that we need to discuss. It's so very difficult to speak with Board members. Phone messages, texts, emails, they all seem to fall into a black hole and are rarely replied to. When you reach out a gazillion times and get zilch for a response, you often just give up. How many times do we need to beat over, get ourselves beat over the head before we get the message that we're never going to speak with the people who really need to hear what we have to say? It's just as difficult reaching out to staff and getting a response. Yes, you are very understaffed, and there aren't enough hours in the day. Nonetheless, the public, and especially the valuable volunteers working for the community, don't like to think that they're being ignored as if they don't exist. I have the privilege of serving on both the CBOC for most of the past 20-plus years and on the 7-Eleven Committee since it was formed a couple of years back. We have a great difficulty, or at least some of us, trying to speak our minds. The district hired an outside consultant to help us run our meetings, and the end result was that people like myself were largely silenced. There has been infighting that prevented us from doing the work in front of us, and we've run into issues with our elected Board members who have allowed politics and personal animus to get in the way of their responsibilities. We've actually had applicants and even members who have walked away saying this isn't what they signed up for. The district needs to take the time to open up the lines of communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next public comment?
That concludes public comments.
Thank you very much, everyone. We're gonna move to AA, Agenda Review and Adoption. Before we adopt the agenda, there is a correction on DBD. The next scheduled Board meeting is September the 11th, 2024, not September 25th, 2024. So that's a correction. Looking at the Agenda Review and Adoption. Any other corrections? Any comments? Seeing none? The agenda is now adopted. All right, we're now moving to B, Discussion Items and Reports. Before we go on with the President of the CBOC, you like to say anything?
Just that I apologize for being late and tardy, and to my colleagues and to the Board, but happy to be here, happy we're having this discussion.
Thank you so much. We're glad to have you here. We are now moving to B1, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, CBOC Membership Outreach, Recruitment, and Engagement Plan. Teacher Payne, this is your item.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. The first item that we have on the agenda tonight is a little bit of a follow-up from the meeting that we had in the spring, back in April, on CBOC Outreach, Recruitment, and Engagement. This is a joint presentation with staff and CBOC Chair. And so, as we move into the next slide. Back in April, there were a number of different strategies and tactics that were looked at from the outreach component to try to reach out to and find additional CBOC members. This was really led by the Communications Department here at the district. Next slide. The goal was to recruit five committee members by May to satisfy compliance and encourage a continuous increase in membership throughout the school year. The results of the outreach and recruitment, there were nine applicants that resulted in three new members, and we currently have one new applicant that we will be meeting with soon. Next slide. This is a summary of the CBOC membership positions as outlined by ed code and Board policy. So ed code requires at least seven members and identifies five specified membership categories: business organization, senior citizen organization, taxpayer organization, parent or guardian, and parent and PTA or school site council member, and then two at-large. Also, as defined by ed code, it's a minimum two-year term with no more than three consecutive terms. The district's Board policy goes beyond what is required by statute and has 11 positions. So there are additional at-large community member positions. You can see here on this slide the current membership of the CBOC. And with that, as we jump into the next slide, I'd like to really turn it over to our CBOC Chair to share more about the exciting work of the CBOC and some of the engagement opportunities that do exist.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Brendan Havenor-Dutton, CBOC Chair for this term. I wanted to start by just talking a little bit about the why, the reason I come to the table, the reason that I'm motivated to do this work as a volunteer and as a parent and as a supporter of public school education. And then also, you know, potentially during the discussion item or if other members of the committee wanted to share their reasons for coming, stepping up and volunteering and doing this work, you're more than welcome to. I have a third grader and a first grader in the district. And I myself was educated in public schools in Oakland. Many years ago, or just a few handful of years ago, I had the opportunity to serve on the CBOC in Oakland for three or so years. During that time, I learned a lot about school finance and how it all works. Can't say I'm an expert at all by any means. I have some background in building trades and whatnot, but I was there to learn. And what I was exposed to was really confusing. And so I spent three years trying to make sense of the work, how bond projects were funded, and the relative responsibilities of the Oversight Committee. I stepped down from that position and decided to join the OUSD Facilities Staff. At that time, I was the Energy Sustainability Manager for OUSD. And so going from an oversight position to actually joining the team and trying to improve the work at hand for our students was also a really interesting learning experience. I was there for a couple of years and then moved to Contra Costa County and found an opportunity to join this committee. I just say that because for me, this work has been really fulfilling in just the enormous amount of opportunity to learn how, you know, schools get built, schools get repaired, how we fund this critical work, and really just, you know, knowing that everything that we do here is really for the students, students first. And keeping that in mind is something I try to remind myself of every day. So with that, I also want to use this opportunity as a call to action for other members of the community to consider joining our committee. We have four open vacancies. And if you're interested in learning about the school construction process and the way that decisions get made, down to, from the big decisions down to the little decisions, you know, we want you here. We want to welcome you to the table. Most specifically, if you are part of the community of one of the schools that are directly benefiting from the bond program, whether it's Kennedy High School, Richmond High School, or Stige, there is a warm chair waiting for you to come join the conversation. Some of our members can tell you stories and talk about the history of some of the challenges that our district has had over the years. I think there's, while our main responsibility as the CBOC Oversight Committee is oversight and ensuring that the dollars that were approved by the voters are spent on projects that are outlined on the ballot that they voted for, there's also a big opportunity to partner with the staff and the district to make, again, make the outcomes for the bond program meaningful and valuable for our community. So for sure, Kennedy, Richmond, and Stige, we want you here at the table. So please reach out to staff or myself. Contact information is in the agenda. So on this slide here, you're seeing a few bullet points that we wanted to talk about. One of the things that has been challenging for this committee and this work is just the sheer amount of learning and understanding to be able to conduct our work. So training has been a big part of the work in recent years and making sure that we have training resources, whether it's videos or one-off sessions. The CBOC Academy is kind of a vision for ensuring that there are resources and training to support our committee members. That said, if we have a really big, significant turnover rate, it does little to train people that then go off and rotate off the committee. So ensuring that we're welcoming folks onto the committee in a way that supports them with resources, but also speaks, provide opportunities to speak to their fulfillment in why they're volunteering for this work is really important. So we're gonna continue to look at those opportunities, but really try to institutionalize those resources so that, you know, as we bring on new members, we can onboard folks in a methodical way, and we don't have to continue to reinvent the wheel to bring people up to speed. One of the things that have been most fulfilling for me is the site visits and being able to visit sites at various stages of construction. It's essentially a behind-the-scenes look at, you know, how these projects are going. And I have to say, it's a lot different when you're onsite than when you're reading, listening, receiving presentations or reading things on paper. So it's a huge opportunity to get a sneak peek at these facilities. And, you know, we can't, we strive to do a site visit each month and trying to visit sites multiple times throughout the construction cycle. We have, there are members on our committee that have a wealth and depth of experience. And so looking at opportunities for a mentorship between committee members is something that we've talked about, and we strive to connect the dots to make sure we can pass on institutional knowledge from member to member. And then finally, the CBOC Annual Report, just as, you know, education point, the main responsibility for this committee, CBOC, is to issue an annual report to make sure that the district is in line with the bond language and spending bond money as intended. And so these, you know, I kind of want to circle back to one of the contributions I made in Oakland was frankly, a really critical annual report on some of the deficiencies our committee thought needed to be addressed that could strengthen the capital program in Oakland. And in doing that, you know, sometimes these annual reports are extremely lengthy and esoteric and technical at times. So, you know, what we did was we pared it down to some of the most important aspects on one page, on the front page, so that we could tell, you know, the community what we thought and what opportunities existed. I would like to try to do something similar here. I think it's important, for anything that we produce, reports or otherwise, to make sure they're, you know, as accessible as possible to our community, our parents, and our folks that care but may not have the time or capacity to engage at a more in-depth level. So, you know, with that, I think, again, while our charge and our responsibility is really oversight, there's a huge opportunity for partnership in acknowledging that we're all here, not just to make sure the district's following their promises and their rules, but also to look for opportunities to strengthen the system as a whole. So with that, if I may, open it up for other members to share their why. Is that okay?
Your show, friend. Whatever you want to do.
Okay. Did anyone want to speak? Why do you serve on the CBOC?
Pass it down. Yeah, hey, good evening, and also apologies for being late. I joined just a couple of months ago, so this is my third CBOC meeting, first joint meeting. I'm the Senior Program Director at East Bay Center over here, just down the street. And I've been here in Richmond for almost seven years now. I was actually reached out to. I know that the CBOC needed members. And when I first got the email, my response was kind of, I don't know if this really applies to me very much. Like, I teach music, you know, run this program. But in working with our schools, we partner with 15 schools in the district. And every day, I, for the past, you know, six years, I've been going between different school sites, seeing the difference teaching in a classroom when it was Wilson, and then over at the temporary campus, and now Michelle Obama, and seeing the difference that our students experience based on their facilities and how much of a difference it makes. There was a while where I was subbing classes at Stige regularly, again, seeing how much of a difference those facilities make and just seeing them move now here to their temporary campus and what it'll look like in a couple of years. And so I think just highlighting these, how much of a difference the space that students are in really makes in their learning, in their sense of connection to the school, and then ultimately, the community as well, parents coming together. So that's my why. I'm- So that's my why. I'm I'm still learning, but really grateful to be here and, you know, excited to continue learning and contribute how I can.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Humes. I'm the tax payer's representative. And I had a friend who was the last representative, Denise Gianni. And she told me about it at at the meetings and things. And so I went to a couple of meetings and they were talking about change orders and things. And I like to see how things work. You know, I watch who built that, who built the Eiffel Tower, that sort of thing. So I like to see how things work. So I hear, well, that's interesting. It'll make me think, get my mind going. So I was on and I was thoroughly enjoyed it. You you learn a lot of different aspects and I never knew how complicated it was, how much money they spend, things like that. So I've enjoyed my time. Now I'm I'm terming out March, the end of March. So after the holidays, I'll start trying to recruit somebody for to take my place. But I've thoroughly enjoyed my time on the committee.
So hello, I'm Ariel. I am a parent of two kids in the school district, second grade and kindergarten. And I'm also an immigrant. I didn't grow up in public school system here in the United States. So naturally, I care about the learning environment my kids have here, and also I want to learn how this system works. So that's the original motivation for me to apply for CBOC position. And throughout the process, I really learned a lot. And it felt good to have impacts on your kids and other kids, other students' education journey. So I think this is the if you have some I mean, if you want to make some positive impacts to your community, to your, to the society, I think this is one of the right opportunities for you. Thank you.
Before I speak, do you want to give Gia Ma a chance to speak from Zoom?
Did we already promote? Okay, if you can hear me, Ms. Gia, can you accept the promotion? I know you're on your phone, so it may be difficult, but we're trying to promote you from panel, or we're trying to promote you from an attendee to a panelist. Oh, I think we got it. Did we get it? Okay. And if you would like to tell us your why for being on CBOC, that would be great. If you're able to unmute and tell us your why for being on CBOC. Looks like she may be having a little difficulty. Mr. Gosney, do you want to go ahead and then we'll see if she pops back on?
Certainly. Thank you very much. My name is Don.
Oh. Oh, hi. Oh, thank you so much. Hi, my name is Gia Ma. Thank you for giving me the opportunity as a CBOC meeting participation. And I I have two children in West Contra Costa School District now. So as a parent, I really like to participate in meeting and contribute to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gosney.
Thank you very much. I'm glad we had an opportunity to hear from her. She's always so quiet. This is, she said more just now than we've heard in the past year. So this is a good thing. All right. So my name is Don Gosney. I said, I'm completing my 11th year on the CBOC, 21 years with working with the CBOC and another five years before that, trying to get the the bond program going, starting before the bond program even existed. I was part of the group that went around to the schools. Then Board President Charles Ramsey, he knew that he needed somebody to pay for the campaigns to pass all these bonds. Since he couldn't be come out of the the bond, I mean, the the school district money. So he got groups like labor unions, like myself, architects, engineers, bond salesmen, people that were going to put a lot of people to work and make money off of it, let them pay for the campaigns because they were about $300,000 or $400,000 a campaign. Anyway, I've been with the program for a while, 54 years in the building trades in heavy construction. So I know a little bit about construction. And I just want to touch on a couple of the items in your bullet points there. The site visits, my opinion, that's one of the most valuable tools that we've got, to be able to physically see what's what's happening. The pictures that were presented by staff are great pictures. I'm a photographer. I love pretty pictures. But it's not quite the same. And we're seeing things that they want to show us. And when we're out there on our own, we're seeing things that all of a sudden that I'm seeing something, she's seeing something different, Brendan is seeing something completely different. That's the benefit of having multiple pairs of eyes seeing things. We're able to to talk and see these things. But what's important on the site visits is not a site visit to the school. Okay, I don't want to be visiting the school and say, I'd like to take a look at the underground pipes and the and the the electrical. Well, we got a building on top of that right now. We're not going to dig it up for you. We need to be able to see things as they go because a lot of times it's a different set of eyes, a third set of eyes, as they say, that can alert the the school district, the facilities committee about them. I mean, at the last visit we had to Hercules Middle School, I pointed out three safety violations that could cost the school district tens of millions of dollars. This is one of the businesses I'm in, working on asbestos litigation. As a consultant, I know what can happen. We are the deep pockets. We are the the ones that get sued and have to pay out the tremendous amounts of money. And even if we don't pay, we pay the attorneys. A lot. So getting it, district wasn't looking at that kind of thing, but I'm able to see some of that, something like that. That's just one, a tip of the iceberg on these kinds of things. So these site visits are very important. I said, one of the things I really appreciate, even if we didn't have a CBOC that wanted to go on site visits, Louis always took care of me on a personal basis. It would arrange to to take me on site visits. That came to a stop in August of last year. And it's hurt because we've had huge parts of schools that were completed without us being a chance to to take a look at that. I'm going to be pushing that on a few of the, on Kennedy, on Richmond, on Stige. But the mentorship is also very important. For the all intents and purposes, Lorraine and I are the old timers. We've been around here for a little bit. Everybody else is a newbie. They might have been here for a year and a half or something like that, but it takes a very long time to get to understand what we're doing here. To understand the financial reports, the importance of site visits, annual reports, and and how the system actually works. So we need to be able to talk to each other. Have the the newbies talk to the the old people about the way things used to be. That's my real value. I'm the one that tells everybody the way things used to be. Yeah. Bring me a couple of pictures of margaritas. We're going to have a real good talk. Okay. But one of the problems that we've got, we're not provided with any way to communicate with each other. No phone numbers, no email addresses, no mailing addresses. And when you got people that show up either at the, as soon as the meeting starts or a few minutes late, and then they leave immediately afterwards, we don't have an opportunity to talk with each other and we can't talk with each other during the meeting itself because unless it's on the agenda, we can't talk about anything. It's, it really stifles our ability to use each other as tools. And mentorship is is also important when we're soliciting new applicants. When I was chair, I used to have a lengthy conversation with them so they understood what they were getting themselves in for before they signed up. They don't want to 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 sign up and get to be a part of the the CBOC and then find out, this has nothing to do with what I signed up for. Okay, because then they stop showing up or they quit on their own. And that just doesn't do anybody any good because then we we fall out of compliance with the state law with needing the seven required positions. It doesn't help the community at all. So that mentorship is critically important, but we need to be able to talk with each other. But also, that means people on the CBOC need to be able to just talk with the board members. Because now I appreciate the fact that a couple of you are attending our board, our CBOC meetings on on Zoom all the time. I see you on there. That's that's really valuable. But we don't get a chance to really talk with you about things. You can't ask questions in a position like that and you don't get any kind of responses. But the other board members need to be able to sit down with us because right now we got a little over $600 million that's going to be spent. If we had more, we'd be spending it. We saw the initial budgets for Kennedy and Richmond. That's another half a billion dollars more than anticipated. You know, Stige needs twice as much money as it's got. So and then we've got, then we've got 16 more schools that are going to be left out. So we, but you need to be made aware of how things work, about what things, how things are being handled, whether it's being handled at the at the school sites themselves, whether they're being handled by the facilities department, whether what the concerns of the community are. Because you can't be everywhere at once and you can't, you can't learn all this, but you need to be able to talk with us and learn something more. It's that mentorship, it's a two-way street. It's it's valuable, but it's totally worthless if you, if the board members don't take advantage of what's being offered. Same thing with each other here. We don't take advantage of it, it's lost opportunities. And that hurts the program, that hurts the community. Because right now, if you don't mind, I'm going to talk just a few things on.
I wanted, I don't mean to interrupt, Don, but I do want to challenge you to just share because you have the unparalleled, you know, engagement and commitment over the years compared with other members. And I I just want to challenge you to share your why. Why do you come to the table? Why do you do this work? And why is it so important to you?
Everybody in this room, with the exception of staff that get paid for it, and even them to a certain extent, everybody in this room believes in giving back to the community. We wouldn't be here if we weren't, didn't want to give back to the community. How much do we want to give back? Well, that varies on person by person, but I've always tried to give back to the community, whether it's my union activities, whether it's my city council activities, whether it's my my school board activities, giving back to the community is important. You know, for 15 years I administered this Ivy League's Connection Scholarship Program. I mean, even when that folded, I was in the hole $60,000 because of that. Okay, I never got reimbursed. Okay, that's giving back to the community. It helped our kids be above and beyond what the school district can provide for them. We're all trying to give back to the community and that's what I want him here for. And I have the toughest time dealing with my own mother and my best friend who keep asking me, why do you waste your time on all of this? Because they they hear me, well, whining, I'm going to be polite to use the word, about all the travails that I run into at at all the things I work on as well. Because it's part of what was beat into me as a young person, give back to the community. And that's what I try to do. I've got certain skills. I don't know everything, far from it. But what I do know, I think, could be a benefit to the the CBOC, to the facilities, to the school boards, to the community. So I try to to share with them as much as I can. Sometimes it's appreciated, sometimes not. But that's basically why I volunteer. Can I touch on some of these other things or do you want to move on?
I feel like we should move on.
All right.
I think.
But there is going to be an, there is going to be an opportunity because the way that we typically do it is presentation, public comment, and then questions. We all can ask questions and then we can give our comments. So then that'd be a space for you to continue with this slide or anything else you would like to say.
You know, you're being recorded on that, so I'll hold you to that.
Absolutely. I wrote it down. That's how we, that's how we typically do it. And Mr. Dalton, you're good with that kind of process?
Yeah.
Okay. So when we, staff, do we have any public comment? We do have public comment? Okay, go ahead.
We're going to do one minute, right?
I'm sorry?
One minute.
Yes, we do. So we have Don Gosney.
No, I can't, I can't. I've got, I've got two minutes prepared. I can't, I can't bifurcate it and just skip every other word. That would be an injustice, what the message I'm trying to say.
We have Ariel.
Okay. Thank you, Board Trustees, Dr. Hurst and the district staff. I want to begin by expressing my gratitude to the district's staff for their ongoing support of the CBOC meetings, membership outreach and recruitment efforts. I believe we have made some progress. And I think it's essential that we continue this momentum. And turning to the bond programs, it's important to acknowledge that over 10 years have passed since the initial bond measure D was approved in 2010. Given this, I think it's time for us to conduct a comprehensive review of the progress made and the impact these bond funds have had on our students and the communities. I would like to ask the following questions. Number one, impact assessment. How have the bond funds directly benefited our students and the local communities? Are these benefits equitable, reaching the majority of our student population? Oh, so I have three more questions. Okay.
You can ask them in the rotation of what we're doing and in your comments too. So we'll, you'll still have time.
Okay, thank you.
So that concludes public comment. Okay.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, Mr. Dalton, what we usually do is we do three questions and two-minute comments. You can, we can take it as high up. Do you want, you want to do five questions and three-minute comments? What's your flavor?
Same for person.
Uh huh, per person. So typically, per person, we do three minutes and two comments, but we can do three questions, I'm sorry, three questions and two-minute comments, but we can go as high as five questions and three-minute comments. It's whatever floats your boat.
Let's go five.
Okay.
Does that feel good?
So we'll do five questions and three-minute comments. Okay. So we'll start with, anyone have questions off of this presentation that we just got? Okay, so I see. So we want to go CBOC and then we're rotated around? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Humes, go ahead.
Yes. Melissa, you were talking, refreshing us on what happened at the April meeting, the goals for the recruitment, et cetera. It's now been five months and we still don't have a business representative. Does Rochelle have, when she gave her presentation, she said they had something like 450 partners in business? Well, what happened? Is there any update from her on that?
Good evening. Thank you for the question. In speaking with Ms. Forrest, she did share that the strategies and tactics that are shared in the presentation were completed. The results are simply the people that then applied. And so I think what we have found is that when there is a personal outreach, so a person who reaches out, we've had a better response.
That's my question.
Any other questions from the CBOC side? Moving over to the board, Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So I do want to follow up exactly over what Lorraine said about the business position, which is it does require personal outreach. So do we know if anybody went directly to chamber meetings to recruit?
So I'm not aware of any staff members that went to the meetings to recruit. I can follow up and confirm that, but on behalf of the facility staff, we did not.
And did anybody from the CBOC hit up El Cerrito Chamber, Richmond Chamber, I think there's San Pablo. I've been all, I actually, I think pretty much everybody has got one.
Yeah, I was just going to say, like, I'm happy to reach out to anybody I have contact information for, and I know Don is is well-connected as well.
When I started reaching out, somebody from the superintendent's office reached out in response and told them that I do not have the authority to speak for the district. And the invitations ended right there.
Okay, so let's clear that up. I've been to the El Cerrito Chamber to talk to them. Is there a problem with board members or with CBOC members going out to the chamber or to other groups, asking for people to join the CBOC? Could we get a clarification on that?
There's no problem with doing that, Trustee Reckler. I'm not sure who shared that, but maybe I can speak with you after this meeting to get some clarity on that. But we have no problem with any member reaching out to El Cerrito organizations or businesses, or any business for that matter.
I know on that list of that Rochelle gave us, they did say city council. I know on that list of, that Rochelle gave us, they did say city council meetings. Why don't we ask her for an update on what happened, if if they did any reaching out, what happened? No use making the same mistakes again. Such a suggestion.
Absolutely. And I think we can follow up with her, and then we can provide an update to both groups. So we'll provide an update to the board and to the committee.
I have another question, too. There seems to be reluctance to deal directly with business organizations. I've asked this a couple of times. And I think Louis once said, well, we don't do that type thing. Do you ever contact, you know, have an outreach to the different business organizations in the area?
So I can't speak specifically to those concerns. I think echoing the superintendent's comments, we have found that it's most successful when we reach out to people that might be interested. I think really hearing from all of the current CBOC members tonight, for the people that had the chance to watch this meeting, or maybe can watch it on YouTube, I think it's always really helpful to hear from somebody who's been on a committee, what their experience has been, when you're walking into a situation that might be unfamiliar. And so I think each one of you sharing your testimonies tonight and reaching out is really valuable for people that might be considering the opportunity. We did, some of the applicants that we did receive, we do have our process that we go through where we say, hey, you know, check out a CBOC meeting, and then we meet with them to find out more about the candidate. We did find that some people didn't know exactly what the opportunity was, and when they got more information, they weren't interested in moving forward. But I would say for the most part, we've been able to build the committee the most in the last nine months as compared to maybe like the two years previous, which COVID may have had an influence for that as well. But I think we do have some momentum and would be happy to provide more feedback on that specific outreach and who we saw move forward.
Trustee Reckler, you have more questions?
I do, but I wanted to switch to the annual reports if recruiting is completed.
Share a question, comment, I guess. Earlier this year, I did reach out to some of our principals at high school and middle schools, and then some elementary schools that are on the impacted by the bond program. And I'll just reaffirm my commitment to continue to reach out to those principals, especially at Kennedy, Richmond and Stige. I think there's, you know, an opportunity to work with our leadership to identify folks that are great fit, a great fit, or may may find fulfillment in this position, in this volunteer position. So I think, and I want to acknowledge that it's, it's, you know, that's not the only representation we need on this committee, but it's certainly a, you know, center of the bullseye, in my opinion, to get representation from the schools we're actually improving. So I just want to invite the support from the district and staff to help with that as I embark on, you know, keep inviting our principals to join, join that cause.
Any more questions? If not, we're going to move to comments. Do you have a question?
So is it possible to print out some physical flyers? And then when like I go out, I can give flyers to businesses, like restaurants when I dine, or supermarkets, or would that be possible?
Absolutely. We would be happy to bring printed flyers. We could provide that in advance of the next meeting, or we could just bring it to the next meeting, whatever, whatever you would like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Reckler, you have a question?
I do. I just want to make a clarification. I do still have a question on the 2020, on the annual reports, but on the businesses. So it's important to note that it has to be a member from a business organization. It's not just somebody who owns a business, but they have to be affiliated with some business organization, whether it's a chamber, or consortium, or a, you know, like some sort of business roundtable or something like that. It's just not an individual owner unless they have that affiliation.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions? Trustee Reckler?
So can I move on to annual reports?
We're going to have to do, before we move on to B two, we need to do comments.
Oh.
We did questions, we need to do comments. Any other questions? Seeing none, we can move on to comments. We're going to put three minutes on the clock. You have two minutes. I know, but you still need a little bit more time. It's okay, friend. We're going, we're going to work with it. We're going to get you the time that you need. Let's start with three minutes on the clock, and then we'll see where we have, if we need additional time, we'll add it. All right. Who has comments? We're going to go this way this time. Trustee Reckler, wait for the.
Okay, so this is just specific to recruiting, is that I will go back and own the El Cerrito Chamber and go to their meetings and see if I can, once again, see if I can get anybody interested in that. I'm willing to do that and do that outreach. That's the first thing. The second is, I'm really wondering if there could be a swoop around again to trade unions, because I think that some skill level in actual building construction, architecture, engineering would be helpful. And so those are my two comments on recruiting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Christian, wait for the clock, please, and then go ahead.
Yes, I was just going to add that we also, you know, the El Cerrito Chamber commerce, the Richmond Chamber commerce, you know, make sure that we collaborate with both our cities, making sure that we reach out, you know, to all our community businesses in both cities. That's it.
Thank you very much. Rotating around, comments from the CBOC side, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just say too, there are so, there are also so many community organizations. I imagine if Louis reached out to me, he probably reached out to others, but just off the top of my head, I can think of like fifteen in Richmond who work in schools, who do school advocacy, want to make schools better, and they have so many staff members. So I'm also happy if I have language to send to folks, just because I'm connected to so many different community organizations. I'm happy to send that out and try to get just community organizations.
Thank you very much. Ms. Yams, go ahead.
Yeah, I think perhaps it is very successful to talk one on one. But we've been without a business representative for years. I think we've got to think of Plan B. And I think maybe we can do some brainstorming at a future meeting about how to do it. But we've got to, we need the expertise. You know, this is construction. We need, when I came on, we had a project manager, former project manager, a lawyer. We had someone who had done forensic audits, things like that. So we need the expertise. We've been very successful in getting the parents. That was, that worked out great. We've got very, very good people from that. But we've got to get another strategy in how to get professional people connected with construction on our committee. Because otherwise, you're starting from zero and learning. It's going to take you four years to know what the heck we're talking about. That's all.
Ms. Jai on Zoom, do you have a comment or a question? I'm sorry, we didn't ask. Okay, thank you. Do you have a comment, Ms. Ariel?
I have my previous comment that's not finished. Do I continue now? Okay, so I have four questions about the overall bond programs. Number one is impact assessment. I think it's time to do a like fifteen year impact assessment or bond review, whatever you call it. Like, we need to know, like, how have the bond funds directly benefited our students and local communities? Are these benefits equitable, reaching the majority of our student population? And question two, program review. Are these areas within the original bond plan and the priority list that may require adjustments or updates due to changing circumstances, such as the recent stage lawsuit lawsuits? And the third question is future prevention. How can we ensure that the district is proactively addressing potential issues to prevent future legal challenges similar to Stige case? The fourth one is equity and fairness. How can we safeguard the fair education rights of all students, regardless of their background or location within the district? So I believe that a thorough evaluation of these questions will help us to ensure that taxpayer dollars are being utilized effectively and efficiently to provide a high quality education for all students. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Gosny?
Apologize for speaking quickly, but I've got too much information here. When the CBOC and the board met earlier this year, we discussed communication and outreach back then, too. I recall having brought up the numerous opportunities of using social media, Facebook, Nextdoor, The Patch newspapers, the four online newspapers as options to get the district's message out above and beyond their own limited options being used. I have yet to see anything on any of these. As far as outreach, with regards to soliciting membership on the CBOC, for the three years I was a CBOC chair and beyond, I used to attend the city council meetings for all five cities and solicit applications to the CBOC. I would take advantage of their public comment to get the word out. I frequently communicated with all twenty six council members and the county supervisors. At their invitation, I would give reports to the district and, on the district and the bond program for the Richmond Neighborhood Coordinating Council. That is, until someone from the superintendent's office reached out and emphasized that I was not authorized to speak for the district. I never spoke for the district. I reported on publicly available information from board and committee, community meetings. Nonetheless, after being admonished from up high, the invitation ceased. I used to give five minute reports, understanding reports, at least once a month and often multiple times here at the board meetings. I would communicate with city managers about what was going on. I posted numerous articles about our bond projects on my own online newspaper, a newspaper with a reach of about fourteen thousand. We've all watched plenty of TV shows and movies where someone is in AA, and they always emphasize that you can never correct the problem until you admit that the problem exists. We need to make that admission before we can move forward. On another matter, the way the district handles the CBOC applications is less than forthright. The district used to publicly interview applicants at a facilities meeting, and then make a recommendation to the full board where the application could be reviewed, discussed, and voted on at a public meeting. Now the interviews are in private, but only, that's only if staff allows the application to be considered. I sat and watched as twenty one applications were simply ignored. Mine, Anton Young Harris, Guadalupe Andlana, and Tom Pennises in particular. And the secrecy, why the secrecy, and why were the applications being filtered? And if you, and you wonder why the level of trust is so low, you know, on some of these other issues. We need to define what a business organization actually is. Would you be surprised to learn that fewer than twelve percent of the businesses actually belong to chambers of commerce? Why? Because it's extremely expensive. I own three businesses. They're mom and pop shops. I can't afford that my entire profit would go to the membership fees on these things. But, and when I applied, my three businesses didn't count. The fact that I've been part of the building trades for the past fifty plus years did not qualify as a business organization, although they are a chamber of commerce for the building trades. So it doesn't make any sense. You need to define this in writing, so people understand why they're being rejected. And we need also to reach out far beyond the school universe. Would you be surprised to learn that you've got two hundred and sixty two thousand residents in West Contra Costa County, of which a hundred and fifty eight thousand of them are taxpayers? And how many of them do you think belong to PTSAs? Not many. And you, but you don't talk to them at all about joining the CBOC. You've got such a narrow focus on that. It hurts our ability to get the word out and solicit applications, because we think that the universe is so small. We've got to change that. I've got more to talk about, but my time is up a little bit ago.
Board and board, would you like to extend more time to finish this conversation, or would you like to move on to B two? What's your pleasure?
Let's do five minutes.
All right. I'm okay with five, extending it five more minutes. Does anyone have anything else to say on this item?
I appreciate. I'm sorry, just watching the hand signals. I live in a world where some hand signals, next thing you know, guns come out. All right. I appreciate all the work that the district has been doing. But there's so much more that can be done about getting the outreach out there and letting the people know exactly what it means to be a part of the bond oversight committee. One of the problems that we have had by, when we started enticing and inviting people from PTSAs to join the CBOC, they have such an extremely narrow focus. All they care about, not the fifty three schools in our district and part of the bond program. They care about the school right across the street, the ones that their kids go to. In private, I can name you off a half a dozen of our CBOC members. That's all they cared about. Once their school was taken care of, adios, they were gone. So we can't have that, because you've got to look after the all of the district. That's one of the benefits of persons like myself. I have no skin in the game. I have no kids going to any of these schools. But I still care about it, because for the day I died, I get to pay for these taxes that are going to pay for these bond programs. And I get my property tax bill. I got nine lines on there talking, they say WCCUSD. It hurts out there. It hurts a lot. I mean, fully forty percent of my property taxes go towards paying for the, these schools. And again, it's going to be going on for the, I'm an old man, so I will die before I pay off all those things. But we need to make sure, to rebuild the trust in the community. Because they don't trust the district, they don't trust the board. Doesn't matter who's running things, doesn't matter who's elected on there, they just don't trust them. They've all got horror stories about things that have gone wrong. You know, Stige is a good example. They say, well, we were cheated out of Stige. Yeah, you got all, I'm hearing all kinds of stories about, that are not true about what happened with that. Okay, but we need to be able to get out, reach out to the community, to get the word out, to get the truth out. And that starts with more than just talking to PTSAs. Okay, and that also means that at board meetings, we need to be able to talk. Okay, nobody likes being staring into a clock and saying, you're out of time, Mr. Gosny. Because that's, it usually happens right when I get to the good stuff. I'll shut up for a little bit.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we are ready to move to item B two. Bond program, annual updates and status of financial reports. Teacher Payne and Ms. Hooper, this is your item, ladies.
Thank you. One of the things we really wanted to partner is, the first part of the story is come and join the CBOC. Here's some of the wonderful things that the CBOC does that you can be a part of. And kind of the second component of that is tonight, as staff, we really wanted to take this opportunity to provide a report that's in two parts. The first part really celebrates the projects. And you're going to get the chance to hear that from our Director of Facilities Planning and Construction. And as has shared, she has incredible passion for how things are built and how learning spaces are created and the effects that they have. And then the second part, I'll be walking through some of the financial reports. And we hope by giving you a glimpse into the work that happens at our monthly CBOC meetings, that some of our future CBOC members that are out there watching tonight, that maybe this will pique your interest and you'll come and join us at the next meeting. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Mahia Hooper.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Happy to be here. We wanted to start the presentation with really communicating out how you can see our communications. So we do have project newsletters that are distributed monthly for those that are, for the projects that are under construction. We also do a design additions as we move into major milestones or alter the transportation, which is what spurred this particular newsletter, making sure people knew that we had relocated the front door of Kennedy High School. There's also projects websites for each one of our bond projects that are active. And that link gets you to the listing of the bond projects as well as an ability to sign up for the newsletter with the second link. Reviewing the progress of the facilities master plan throughout the last year, we have projects that we have completed. One of them being Cameron Critical Needs Project. This project was really focused on creating or establishing a new HVAC system. This campus had an old boiler system with no air conditioning or mechanical ventilation. But as we've learned, as we go through HVAC projects, Um, but as we've learned, as we go through HVAC projects, they typically also requires um new electrical service to be able to support those units um that in schools that previously did not have that electrical load. As well as um accessibility upgrades that are required with every project we take through uh the Division of State Architect or DSA. Um, we are currently in closeout. The notice of completion is going to the board on Wednesday for this project. Um, so you can see at the top, the hallway um that received new flooring um and also one of the classroom spaces uh that were adjusted. Um, you can see the new ductwork. We took the opportunity when this campus was moved out to also do a few maintenance projects to update the campus. Linked with this project, um and it was in the same con- construction contract, but it, it is a separate project within the facilities master plan was the Collins Critical Needs Project, which is also HVAC. So featured here are some of the different components of the project. We have the new electrical service, which I previously described, as well as the HVAC unit. Um, and we did accessibility upgrades here as well, which included uh new classroom sinks, new door hardware for each one of the classroom spaces, which allowed us to rekey the campus to a higher level of security keying system. Um, and uh drop-off improvements to the front where we redid um the front sidewalks to make them accessible. Projects under construction, of course, we have our lake rebuild. Uh, this is a full rebuild of the campus. We have just recently completed the admin first through third grades and six, fourth through sixth grades buildings. We are currently under construction for the uh half of campus that you see on the left side of the heart, which is going to be our new outdoor dining plaza area uh once it's completed. Uh, the left side also includes the playground spaces as well as a turf field. As far as where we are in the overall construction timeline, we are anticipating to be complete in the fall/winter of twenty-five. Um, we are currently just underway on the second half of construction. Which means we had a fabulous ribbon cutting ceremony, which was wonderful right before school started. Um, so it was great to be able to celebrate the opening and to welcome our families and students into the new facility for the school year. Uh, granted, we are still in temporary housing for some of the functions because we don't have the kindergarten and multipurpose room uh built yet. Uh, but we did clear the site during uh the summer. So we did not stop construction uh just because we were opening a building. We kept on going. So the portables, as well as the classroom building in the original NPR, as well as the office building have all been demolished, all the way down to their foundations. Uh, we've done soil preparation and we are starting the foundation work uh this week to be able to um bring in the uh, the site utilities required uh to support the new campus. Moving on to Hercules Middle School, High School Critical Needs Project. This project is eight new science classrooms, four for the middle school, five or four for the high school. And uh we are well underway in construction, as you can see in the picture on the left. That's the interior of one of the uh, the science labs. Um, one of the unique features, we tried to build in many elements of science curriculum into the building itself. Uh, and so while not all of the ceiling grid is present yet, there is a purposeful uh design element of exposing the ceiling and the utilities within the building as a teaching tool of how our buildings run and what's required to make them function. Um, we have some great natural daylight and um we're really excited to bring this project forward. Uh, there's also outside uh opportunities, which you'll see here is the amphitheater seat walls. Um, they put in the drainpipe and the turf is coming very soon uh to be able to complete that portion of the project. Um, we also have finished the stucco work. The painting is almost complete in this picture. Uh, and we're moving towards doing the outside belt uh, uh outside coverings for the outdoor learning areas that are on each side of the building. Shannon, oh, and the overall completion is planned for by the end of this calendar year. For Shannon Elementary School Critical Needs Project, this is a new multipurpose room, cafeteria, dining, restroom, and support space for the Shannon Elementary School community. Um, it will replace a portable multipurpose room that's currently on site. Um, these are a couple of the renderings of where we are going. And the next picture shows where we are. Um, so as you can tell, we're, we're still working on it. Um, we have some foundation work in the ground as well as our underground utilities. Uh, but we highlighted, because once you get your foundations in, you can really start seeing where the state, the different pieces of the project are landing. Um, so we've outlined that on this slide to show the, the stage, the dining area, the serving and restroom corridor, as well as the kitchen. Um, and then right behind it, you can see the current uh portable NPR uh that's in the background. And the next project is Kennedy High School Critical Needs Project. So Kennedy High School had an original Kennedy or a original um project described in the two thousand sixteen master plan to demolish the one hundred and two hundred buildings and relocate to the temp campus. This project is moving forward um and it is separate from the modernization project. We did a, a variety of alterations to move into the temp campus as well as the move itself. These are ninety-five percent complete. We still have a few lingering projects that we're trying to finish up. Um, but we did successfully move into the temp campus uh and we had new fencing, additional whiteboards, painting, signage, the voltage um connections to be able to support our Kennedy uh students. We are also completed the boiler room renovation. Uh, there was an old boiler room in the three hundred building that was no longer utilized. We removed the obsolete boiler, added ventilation, interior wall finishes, a new split system to add air conditioning to support our electrical um devices that need to be stay, need to stay under uh eighty-five degrees uh and an electrical transformer into the space. Uh, that is step one to being able to relocate all of our low voltage from the main building, which is the one hundred and two hundred or in the one hundred building to be able to uh make sure that our campus stays up and running after we demolish that building. And so that's going out to bid shortly. Uh, it has been advertised. And then we need to demolish the one hundred, two hundred, and also the five hundred buildings to make way for the building A, which is the new um two-story building that's classroom and offices, as well as the student center. We also have a few projects in design. Uh, Kennedy Modernization is the follow-along project. Um, once the one hundred, two hundred, and five hundred buildings are removed, it'll make way, as I said, for the new uh classroom, office building, and student center. Uh, we also are remodeling the uh current cafeteria to support our CTE programs. The six hundred building will allow um additional si- room for existing CTE programs, as well as remodeling uh or modernization of the gymnasium, science building, and library to varying extents as necessary. Um, there are, is a variety of site work also planned for the project. Uh, and this is a three-D rendering of the uh new classroom building uh with the front door and the administration is in the lower left-hand quarter. Richmond High also has a modernization project going. Um, both these projects have the same budget and a similar timeline of a phased completion by twenty thirty. Um, on the Richmond project, we are demolishing the western half of the main building, as well as the center mall space. We're building a new two-story building, classroom building along Twenty-third Street. Um, and remodeling uh the remaining spaces uh as well as doing a modification to the gym um to support a, a new locker room and uh PE area connected to the gym. Um, there's also site work associated with each uh across the campuses, including a new drop-off zone and visitor parking lot, which we're um hoping will help the um congestion on Twenty-third Street and also allow visitors to park onsite. Uh, here are some renderings of the different spaces, uh including the main entrance um as well as the theater entry and two-story building and the band quad, which is on the backside of that two-story building. For the Stige Modernization, uh we are developing a uh package to be able to go under procurement for our design build contractor uh or team that will include an architect that will allow us to finish the designs for that modernization and um build a new campus. The Stige uh community and school have been relocated to the design campus and building D and E. Our anticipated completion date is twenty twenty-seven and the current project budget is four, forty-three million.
And as we transition. Sorry about that. Um, and as we transition, I do not have beautiful construction photos, but I have dazzling financial reports that I cannot wait to share with you, um because this is really where my passion is. Um, so one of the things that we previewed when we were last together in April was really moving from financial reports that were provided on a monthly basis at a meeting to really launching and refining our online reporting portal. And so our reporting uh module is live, which means you can go on the website at any time and you can pull up either financial report for our overall program, which is now um more than twenty-five years old. Um, or you can pull up information on a specific project. And one of the things that we're continuing to do is look at providing additional reports and additional enhancements to the module that's already live. Next slide. So one of the um things that you might want to take a look at is a specific project. And so one of the reports, we call our project status report, is project specific. And so in this particular example, we're taking a look at some financial data for the Hercules Critical Needs Project, which Ms. Mahia Hooper shared is our um science classroom building. And so you can see here on the left-hand side, we have the information represented numerically, and we also have graphics on the right-hand side. Next slide. As you continue down that report, you can see there's information about what we call the major blocks when you're looking at a financial report. What is your budget? What are the dollars that you have set aside for the project? What is committed? Which means what have you contracted for, either in the form of services or purchase? And then what is your expenditure status? So that's what are the dollars that you've already spent? And then again, we have that information represented here um numerically, as well as on the right-hand side, um what is the funding source? So what are the bond measures that are supporting um the dollars for this project? Next slide. Now we start to get into those really good details. And so what our project report shows us here is it's telling us that same information, but it's breaking it down for each one of the types of contracts. And one of the enhancements that we made is in uh parentheses there, you can see, we put kind of a short description for the type of services that that firm is doing. So we can see the first example, we see at the top, construction contract status. That's going to be your biggest contract. Our prime construction, our general contractor, their contract is listed there. And so we can take a peek at it and we can see, okay, what was the initial contract amount? What is the current amount based on change orders approved by the board? What is the work that's already completed? We can see that seventy percent of that contract has been completed and paid. And it also gives us an idea of our notice to proceed when they started the work. Um, down below, there's a lot of people beyond just the construction contractor that it takes to complete a project. And so we see a number of other contracts listed here with that same type of information. We see that there was soils testing done in the performance of this work. We see our inspector. We see commissioning services, which is related to um looking at our systems and doing the testing and balancing. We see the architect, right? So we know who's doing the design services for the project. Next slide. If you wanted to take a more macro look, we could look at our overall program. And so you see here down below what is called our consolidated project status. And this is where every single school site is a simple line, still falling into those major components, right? What was the budget? What are our current commitments? And what are our expenditures? The last column provides the current status, so it identifies projects that are in construction or design, projects that are complete. Next slide. So in addition to the online and reporting module, there's a suite of financial reports that were, were really curated in partnership with the CBOC. Next slide. So one of the things that we're working on doing is trying to take that suite of reports that took a considerable amount of staff time and really move them into the online reporting module so that the information can be available at any time. But we're still reporting the same information that was available in the suite of reports previously produced. So for example, we see here, um, there's a historical archive of our previous financial reports and our suite of reports included the overall program look and our consolidated budget status report, what we call our AP checklist, which we'll look at here in just a second. Um, our spending by site, which was that single line item per school site, and then our overall cash projection. Next slide. So our AP checklist. Um, if you look in the statute, it'll tell you, the purpose of the CBOC is to review the expenditures of the bond program. Every penny that's spent, it's going to show up on this report. And so this is what we call an AP checklist, an accounts payable checklist. And so it provides the data that identifies essentially every check or what we would call warrant that's issued. So this report would tell you if you wanted to see what checks were issued in the month of July, for example, at the Lake Project. It tells you who the vendor is, it gives you the warrant information, and it gives you a brief description of their services. Next slide. Another special report in our suite of reports is report two. The goal of this report was to put the entire program on a page. We cheated a little. We're using the front and the back of the page, um but it's a single sheet of paper. And so this essentially is the report where every site is represented in a single line item. This is a report in the top left-hand corner. We can see what that original report looked like. Down at the bottom, we can see how the new online report is trying to mimic the goals of that original report that was produced, but providing it with some additional functionality. In our online reporting module, there's a level one and a level two. So depending on which button you click, you can get the full roll-up. Or you can select the other button and you'll get a little bit more breakdown um for each one of those school sites. And lastly, report thirteen. Uh, report thirteen, essentially the first page of that report gave an overall cash projection of the overall bond program, and it was really forward-looking. So we had what we called above the line and below the line. So above the line was dollars on hand, projects that we're working on. Below the line acknowledged things like measure R still has future five hundred million to go to market to bond sale. So we'd call that below the line, like the future of the program, something that we know, but we don't necessarily have that cash on hand. Along the right-hand side of report thirteen were all of those notes. So you can see it says like note one, note two. And so what was really great about report thirteen is for each one of those notes, there was subsequent information in the report that gave you the background for that overall there was subsequent information in the report that gave you the background for that overall summary piece. This is a report that's still being produced manually and does require a significant amount of staff time. As we're just closing our books, we'll be producing this report as we've been going through our year-end closeout. We haven't had this report, but we will now have this report through June 30 as we've, as we're closing our books. But this is another report that we're working with the Colby team to create, create in our online reporting modules. So it's information again that'll be available at any time, at anyone's fingertips. Next slide. So maximizing our local bond dollars. This is something that we're really, really proud of. Next slide. And through the state facilities program, our district has leveraged more than $227 million of state dollars that have made our program go that much further. So every time we have a project, whether it be a modernization project or a new construction project, we've also applied for seismic grants, career technical education grants. Every time there's an opportunity, we're sending our application off to the state to secure our place in line according to the program requirements. And so you can see here, since May of 22, we've received more than 20 million. And so those dollars really come back to us and they help us extend our bond program. One of the things that we do want to share, there is a resolution going before the board on Wednesday. Proposition two has been placed on the November ballot and essentially it's got $8.5 billion in funding for K-12 schools and would essentially provide additional dollars that we're currently standing in line for. And as we continue to work through our bond program and the projects that Ms. Mahia Hooper shared, we'll be submitting all of those applications as well and trying to leverage every single state dollar we can and to bring back here to West Contra Costa to continue to extend our program. Next slide. So big finale, here it is. Please come and join us at the CBOC meeting, either as a member or just as a community member. And so if you're watching this, or maybe if you're wondering, how can I learn more about the Hercules Middle and High School Science Classroom Building Critical Needs Project? I'd like to learn more. Well, we'd like to share with you how we believe you could learn more through our project and financial updates. So here's the big drumroll. You could learn about it through our project updates that are presented monthly at the CBOC. Next slide. You could learn through the incredible photos that come forward on a monthly basis, kind of showing the progress of construction or join the CBOC on their site tour. You could check out the project updates that are presented monthly at the meeting that really give a lot of description to the team, the schedule and the scope. Next slide. If you're a contracts person like me, you could dive into the details of the contract to understand more about the progression of the contract and how it's trending, really kind of focusing on that impact analysis. Next slide. And if you really want to know more about the scope, what is actually happening on the site this week? What's going to be happening next week? There are written descriptions here that really supplement the photos that talk about the work that was just completed, the work that's upcoming, and even identify some of the project issues that we're working through on the site. Next slide. You could also log on to our reporting module and check out some of our online reports that provide the numerical information as well as some graphics. You could also reach out to us and let us know other ways that we could present this data to make it more accessible. Next slide. And as you can see, these are kind of the slides from before. So this is that Hercules Financial Status Project Report. Next slide. You could learn more about the contracts and all of the different types of services that it takes to complete a bill. Next slide. Or you could check out our AP checklist. And so one of my favorite things about the AP checklist, and this is something that we've spent a lot of time at the CBOC talking about, is the AP checklist provides what we call the short account code. And so what we're all going to do together here in the next 60 seconds is we are going to take this short string of numbers and we're going to turn it into a sentence. So if you look at the last line item of the AP checklist, it says sole pack construction. It then gives the warrant number and the check date. Then it gives us the short account from our standard account code structure. Next, it identifies the contract number and the number of the invoice, followed by the date services through, the amount and the site. So using that information, I'm going to read to you the bottom paragraph. And all of the information in that paragraph comes out of that single line of data. So just looking at that bottom line of the report, here's what we know. We know that the 12th expenditure to sole pack construction in the amount of $939,036.80 was for services performed through June 30 of 2024 and was paid in check number 237221 on July 23 of 2024 against contract ending in 4154. This expenditure was paid for with bond funds from Measure D 2012 for construction services at Hercules High School. And so sometimes when you take a look at the financial reports, there's a lot of information on the page. We really look forward to continuing to partner together to help bring the numbers to life and to really use the numbers to tell the story about all of the important and exciting work that the bond program's doing. Lastly, subscribe to the newsletter. It's got great information. It's something that we're happy to send to you for a particular project or through the simple survey, you can sign up for all of them. Next slide. Oh, and as a recent enhancement to the project newsletter, it will have information about how to join the CBOC. So as we're reaching out to community and sharing with them exciting news about our projects, we're also reminding them that there's an opportunity to get involved. Check out the project websites, which are essentially a repository for all of the newsletters and different types of updates that we produce. And then lastly, because there is so much to try to unpack, especially when you're navigating the world of finance and the bond program, we have our program management plan, which is available on the website. And one of the things that can be hard is it's easy to get lost in a sea of acronyms and the use of words like project design method and go, what are they talking about? And so our program management plan was really designed with just answering that question. So it's a searchable document. You can go into the PDF, it's linked, and you can search terminology or search for a topic that might be of interest. There's great information in there. Or again, join us at a CBOC and let's talk about it together. So we really want to end the presentation tonight by welcoming everyone to come and join us and learn more about our program and all of our projects. Join the CBOC either as a member or just as a community member. Check us out online. Be sure to take a look at our project and financial reports. They are what they are because of the volunteers and community members that we have the pleasure of sitting here with tonight and CBOC members have passed who have said, I want to know more about this. I'd really like to see that. Check out our project website and subscribe to our newsletter for the most up-to-date information. And so in closing, we had to put it back up here. Join us, join us, join us. So you can sign up to be a CBOC member, a newsletter, check out websites with the links provided here. And then in closing, on behalf of our entire team, we want to thank all of you for being here. We really want to express our appreciation to the CBOC. Volunteer warriors who come every month and partner with us in this work. And with that concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much, ladies, for the presentation. It was really good. It was really, really good. We're going to go to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
So could I have that point of order before we get into that?
Sure, what's your point?
Through the chair, these two slide decks were not included in the agenda packet. Can you please send them to all of us?
Absolutely, we will. We apologize for that. I don't know what happened, but we'll be sure to share them.
Doesn't matter what happened, as long as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
They'll be posted on the website. Absolutely.
Yeah, if, if you, Dawn, if you go to our website, the CBOC website, get down to the quick links, they are included in that agenda.
Thank you so very much. Seeing no public comment, we're going to move on to questions. Five and three, five questions, three-minute comments. We're going to do five questions and three-minute comments. We're going to look to the CBOC side first. Any questions from this side? Go ahead, friend.
Thank you all for the presentation. That was great. Just going back to earlier on in the presentation and hearing about the TK Kinder students in a temporary facility right now at Lake, and then also just keeping in mind our, our Stige students here at Dijon and their temporary campus. I was wondering about temporary campuses, where those funds come from to support the students and make sure that those temporary campuses are the best they can be, if those are bond funds? As well as, are there any minimum requirements for those temporary campuses? And I'm thinking specifically of, I know right now, for example, the Stige students don't have a library and that's not part of, of their campus. They don't have a space for music. I know it's, it's a short period of time. It's maybe two years, but for an elementary, for a first grader, two years is a really long time. We all know if, you know, students don't reach reading proficiency by third grade, that's, they're behind for a long time. So I am just wondering about those temporary campuses and kind of some more information.
So I'll start. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of rules about the use of bond funds. And so it's a little bit more of a complicated answer. And so there's essentially an analysis that's done for those expenses. When it does come to temporary campus and the use of bond funds, the future project has to already be under construction before you can use bond dollars to support the temporary campus. And so that, that's a critical component of the evaluation and we work very closely with experts to make sure that we're appropriately using bond funds. When it does come to the temporary campus, specifically, I think to your question for Stige, there are still a number of facility modifications and improvements that we're making. They just take some time. And so we are still subject to all of the requirements under the Fields Act that essentially are the requirements for any campus that we have students. And so we follow the guidance and the rules of the Division of the State Architect. And so some improvements require design, planning and permitting. And so it just takes more time to bring those about. And so we'll continue to bring updates as we continue to implement some of those facility modifications at the temporary Stige campus. And then I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
Right. As we move forward with construction, construction is inconvenient for everyone. Nobody loves construction while it's happening. Everybody loves construction once it's over. It is a hard time and we understand and really work hard to mitigate the amount of impact that we have to our students and our families during construction. We also work very hard with our district departments to try to find alternatives and creative solutions. Because in the end, whether it is bond funding or district funding, temporary facilities are a investment that's short-term, right? And so trying to make sure that we keep as much of the facility funding in the long-term project as possible is always our goal. So we continue throughout the project to analyze what phasing is more important and what the offset is for what we have to try to provide temporarily. I know at Lake, there was a possibility that we also would not have a library. And I was in communication with Francie, and I don't know her last name off the top of my head, lovely lady in charge of libraries, about what kind of accommodations we could make if we weren't able to have a library at Lake. And so similar plans are in, in place for Stige as well to make sure that there's library services and carts to be able to get books to students. So these different parts and pieces of maybe the curriculum or the program isn't quite executed in exactly the same way, but making sure the kids have the same exposure is always our goal as we move forward through the time of construction.
Any more questions on the CBOC side? Okay, go ahead.
Could you go back to slide 13? It's Cameron Critical Needs Project. Anyway, this is, this is sort of a telling you what we do, but it's a question also. And, okay, getting it? All right, that's fine. We look at all these reports and we try to use common sense and ask finding questions. You're not going to know everything, but if something looks out, you're going to ask the question. An example of that is notice that Cameron, the project budget was $3.5 million here. Notice the description. New HVAC system associated electrical and accessory upgrades, and they had some flooring. Well, then you look at the next one, 14 for Collins. And you notice their budget was 7.3 million, over twice as much. But the description is the same. So we're going to ask Ellen, why is one so much more than the other? And these are the type of common sense questions that we would be asking during a meeting.
So the reason behind that is the size of the campus. So Cameron is a one-building facility that is very small. And Collins has quite a few different wings and quite a few more classroom spaces. So while it is the very similar scope, we were adding considerably more units and a higher amount of electrical upgrades than we were required at Cameron.
And that's a very logical answer. And yet, you know, you ask a common sense question, you'll find out about it. That's the sort of thing we do.
Thank you very much. That was a great example of what happens at the CBOC meetings. That was very good. Any other questions on the CBOC side?
So thank you for the new updates on the constructions projects. My question is when we can have our next site visit?
As soon as it gets rearranged. So we'll have to be in contact.
Okay. Any other questions on the CBOC side?
Can I have one more question?
Sure.
This might be a long answer, so maybe the abridged version. But you did mention that the budgets for the two high schools are the same. And I was curious, given that the enrollment at Kennedy is so much lower than at Richmond, why their budgets are the same? And I, you know, noticing that the budget for Stige, for example, is about two-thirds that of Lake, which makes sense because the population of Stige is about two-thirds that of Lake. So I was curious about those two high schools.
You're absolutely right. There are so many factors that go into it. And so it was in November of last year that the board did approve the budgets for Kennedy and Richmond and for Stige. And part of that is also looking at what are the available dollars to be allocated. We will be coming to the CBOC and to the board, excuse me, with what's called project specifications, which will provide a lot more details about the projects, the spaces and the places. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Mahia Hooper to share a little bit more about that. And I think in seeing those come forward, it'll answer some of those questions about all of the different things that go into putting together a project specification.
So Melissa Payne was correct in saying that there are a lot of different factors. Overall, we did do master plans for both Kennedy and Richmond, and both of them were well over the allotted. Overall, we did do master plans for both Kennedy and Richmond, and both of them were well over the allotted budgets that are were the available funding that was available in measure R. So the board making the hard decision of how do we move forward, knowing that we have great need at both of these campuses and trying to figure out the best way to move forward. And that was the decision that was made. Some factors that are hard to sometimes understand from a broader perspective is one acreage, right? And it kind of goes back to the similar example of Collins and Cameron. You can't just walk away with a portion of the campus untouched. And Kennedy has significantly more acreage than Richmond. And so there's, there's a variety of folks, pieces about that. Also, the tenure demographics are different for the two schools. So it is a a complicated decision and the board moved forward with deciding to split the money between the two campuses. And so that's how we are moving forward. We are bringing forward the educational specifications, which I always like to refer to it kind of as the recipe for a campus. So it's really the quantities and the types of ingredients that you're building. And so that will be coming forward shortly and it will really explain now that we're through schematic design, what we believe is accomplishable within those budgets.
Go ahead, Fran.
Okay. I saw you're, I see you're still going ahead with a modernization program for Stige. Last I heard, they were having a meeting after our our last, you know, our August meeting, they were supposed to have a meeting to talk about student numbers and teacher numbers. Are they going to go through, keeping that score? Are they going to go through with the modernization?
So currently, Stige is at a temporary campus that is co-located here at the Dejounte Campus. And so that will be their temporary home while the Stige location over on Cypress, that project will be, will be completing the modernization project there.
So the school will still be open after the modernization?
Yeah, absolutely. So there is very similar to the Michelle Obama community, right? They moved to a temp campus. We modernized the space and then they moved back into their new space. Very similar for Stige.
Okay, so the, so the discussion was for moving temporarily to this other campus, not whether they were going to keep the school open or shut.
Right. And so it was back in November that the board in their leadership approved that modernization budget, the 43 million. And so we're continuing to move forward with that and we have the procurement set. We have the board's authorization to move forward with design build and we look to issue that procurement this week. Good. Really excited.
Thank you. Any other questions from the CBOC side?
Yep, I have a couple. Oh, go for it.
Thank you. So I just have one. I've been having this question for a while, especially after hearing Stige lawsuit. So do you do regular checkup and evaluation of other campuses that are not on the, on your project list?
Yes, it's a great question. And so we do annual inspections of all of our school sites. And the Office of Public School Construction, OPSE, they actually have created a tool. It's called the Facilities Inspection Tool. And it sets forth the 15 different areas that are evaluated and how to evaluate them. So we do those annual inspections. And one of the ways that you can see data, if there's a particular school site that you'd like to learn more about in regards to their annual inspection, you can review the School Accountability Report Card, also known as the SARC. And so one of the components of the School Accountability Report Card reflects that annual inspection that's done at all of the sites. One of the things that I think it's important to note is those annual inspections as identified in statute and as set up by the Office of Public School Construction are inspections based on how the facility was designed. And so there are limitations associated with those annual inspections and what they review. But yes, to answer your question, we do inspect our sites annually and we do report that information out.
Thank you. Let's go to now.
And President, you had a question?
Yes, so a couple of questions. One is what would we need to do to make site visits open to the public? Is that feasible, realistic?
So one of the things that we always have to keep very present in our mind is that safety comes first. And construction sites, there's a lot of safety involved with being on a construction site. Kind of an added layer of consideration for safety is that a lot of our construction sites are school sites. And so there's a lot of guidance on what the requirements are for going to a school site, especially if it's occupied as identified in ed code. And so the statute does provide for CBOC site visits. I think if there was a desire to do a more broad site visit, we would really have to evaluate that from a safety lens before making that commitment.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Sorry, can we do live streaming when we do school site visit?
So one of the things that happens when we contract with a firm and they are under contract for that construction project, they take on the liability and the insurance for that site. And so part of partnering with our builder again is looking at whenever we are having a site visit that we're considering all of the different components of the safety plan from a district lens, from a risk management lens, and also from the contractor's safety plan. So that's also a question that I couldn't give a general answer for. And the question would be, we would have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. But I think if we work together to understand what the goals are of a broader visit or documentation of the visit to bring transparency or to provide that access, I think there's some creative ways that we could work together and partner to do that. It just might not be, it needs to be something that passes all of the safety checks first.
And second question, more also a kind of a logistical question. What's the feasibility of rotating our meeting location for CBOC meetings? I know we're nicely set up at the facilities office and that's, that's, that's convenient. But maybe looking at opportunities to piggyback on PTA meetings or, or similar kind of strategy.
I love it. I think, I think these are all great ideas and, and the magic is in the details and we'd love to partner on that.
Any other questions from the CBOC side? Ms. Jai, any questions online? Hearing none. And see, oh, go ahead, Ms. Himes.
I have a question on the, one of the portal, the financial portal. On slide 32, the online reporting portal, that's the Hercules Critical Needs Project. Okay. Oh, we got it. Fast. Okay. In the left-hand side, it talks about site costs, soft costs and hard costs. What are they?
It's a great question. So one of the other things that we're trying to do with our financial reports is really match state reporting. And so when we talked about the, the grant reports that we submit to the state, the way that we're capturing and categorizing our financial data is really in alignment with how we would submit those applications and ultimately complete the audit process with the state. So I thought I'd just throw that out there. There's a lot of thought that's gone into how we're organizing our data. But the site cost, when you're thinking about this project at Hercules, right? We saw the beautiful picture of the amphitheater and we cannot wait to invite you to join us there for ribbon cutting, as we heard, nearing towards the end of the calendar year. That would be site costs. So it is, it is the investment that you've made on what sometimes we call flat work. So when you think about like the site, so the, the play yards, the play area, that outdoor amphitheater, right? That's a site cost. Soft cost is a term that would, that you might find in the program management plan that would tell you that's essentially services. So the wraparound services to what is hard, hard cost and hard cost is your construction cost. That's your general contractor. So your soft cost would be your architect, your inspector, all of the different engineers, the other types of people that wrap around a project to ensure that it is safe and that it is compliant and that it's meeting all of the rules associated with construction. And so those essentially are the three buckets. And that is a major component of how we report back to the state in terms of allowable expenses for different types of grants.
Okay. And, and there's, if you go along the top, it talks about committed funds and expended funds. If I subtract the expended from the committed, should that tell me what's left in that budget for that?
So a, a great way that I like to share this with the team is you have a budget, right? So your budget or the dollars that you have available, your commitment is what you commit to. So it's either that you're going to purchase something and you've issued like a purchase order or it's a contract. You have made a commitment, a written commitment with somebody that you're going to provide these services for these, for this cost at this timeframe. You've made that commitment. So then based on that commitment, you make a payment and your payment is your expenditure. Those are the dollars that you spent. So let's say, for example, you have a budget for your cell phone. And then you sign up for your plan and you've made that commitment, right? This is my commitment. I'm going to pay this amount every month and this is what my plan's going to look like. And this is how long I have that commitment. Your expenditures are going to be the dollars that you've paid pursuant to that contract you have for your cell phone, the dollars spent. And so when you look at what budget would be available, you would look at your budget minus your commitments. Does that make sense? Because your expenditures will come from what you've committed, the dollars that you paid pursuant to your contract.
Yeah. And you talk about change orders. How much wiggle room do you have when you budgeted for a project to, to add money to change orders? Because some of these were quite large.
So it depends on the type of services. So when you're looking at a construction contract by public contract code, if a change order is greater than 10%, then it requires action. You need to make a finding, right? But there are other types of contracts, for example, some of the soft costs and so the special services that we have that wrap around a project where we may contract that in a way such that the original contract is small, right? We have them go and do a survey. We have them go and do a report. The larger part of the contract comes later. And instead of negotiating the full contract in the beginning, when we have the least amount of information, we go out and procure and we do the contract for that smaller amount because we want to make sure we're getting the best price. And we can do that first part with the information we have. But as a project moves through, you learn so much more about the project. So we do, we use a lot of strategy to ensure that we're getting the very best use of every dollar. And so when you look at special services and soft costs, a lot of times we don't commit to the contract value for the entire project at the very beginning because there's so much we still don't know. And so we'll do a change order for that special service. But it doesn't mean that we didn't know we weren't going to need these services. It was that we wanted to negotiate the price for these services when we had the best information so that we could get the best value for every dollar committed. And so it truly depends.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions on the CBOC side? Seeing none, I'm going to move over to the board side. Trusty Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So when the board increased the budget for Stige in November, there was a motion that a report was supposed to come back on status no later than May 2024. The board did not receive a status report in May 2024, so I'd like to know why. And I'd like to know when the next time Stige is coming so that it could, it will be discussed by the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Great question. I, I may have to defer for the question of why it didn't come forward in May. But what I can share is we're going out for the design build procurement. And in the design build procurement, in this particular type of delivery method, we're procuring the designer and the builder. And so within this procurement method, we can say, here's the budget for the project. Here is what our elementary educational specification says. And then we turn it over to the community and they submit a proposal back to us and say, for that price, for that budget and understanding the ed spec, the recipe for the project, here is the project we propose to design and build within the budget. And so we're going out with a design build procurement this week. Typically, a design build procurement, especially one of this nature for such a large project, we anticipate coming back to the board in November towards the conclusion of the procurement. One of the things that we can do is provide updates throughout the procurement, but we anticipate coming back before the board in November.
And can somebody here, Dr. Hurst, can you answer why it didn't come back to the board in May?
Yeah, I would need to check with Mr. Freeze. I was thinking about that as you asked that question. So I'll reach out to Mr. Freeze and then provide a response to the board as to why it did not come back in May.
Okay, thank you. The next is, on these reports, how do we know this information is accurate? I'm sorry. First, I have, I have done new systems like this. So I know that does no ways, you know, it takes a little time for, you know, things smooth out. But seriously, how do we know that this information is accurate and what are the checks and balances that are in place to ensure that that information is accurate?
It's such a good question and this is the stuff I love. So I'm so glad that you asked because I love to talk about this stuff. So our district has our enterprise financial system, which is really a system that records actuals. And so what the Colby system does, which is the document controls and project financial control software that we're using, it actually operates on the front end of our financial system and on the back end. So our plan is in that financial system and there is a weekly check for the financials that come out of our actual system, our audited enterprise financial system back into our project system. And so the plan is in Colby. We say, here's the assignments of the budget. Here's how we plan to spend those dollars according to the different types of services based on the account codes. And then as we continue to work through that project, that check is happening on a weekly basis. And so there have been concerns raised about the cost associated with a double entry, right? There's an entry into our district financial system and there's also an entry into our project financial system. But as a result of that, there's a double check on every single transaction we do in our bond program, which means internally a staff, following our bond program management plan, we have all of our forms. So every commitment against the bond program goes through a financial review. It goes through a contracting review and it goes through a facilities review internally. In addition to that, we have the external verification to make sure that everything that we've moved forward transactionally as an actual in our financial system is according to the plan that we have in our project management system. And anytime, because it does happen, sometimes there's a question. I see that this item moved forward. I see that this item moved forward and it was charged this way. I think maybe it should have been charged this way. And it immediately initiates a discussion of if a change should be made or not and why.
So is, is one person taking a bill or an invoice and putting it into two separate systems?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. So yes and no. So computers are great. And so they don't talk to each other on the backend, but there is reporting where we can do like a batch entry. So instead of I'm going to type this item for every item into this system and now I'm going to go do that same amount of data entry into another system. The reason why it's weekly is because on a weekly basis, that's when we do our check runs. So then we can run that batch and then we can upload that batch into the project's management system to make sure that we're following our plan.
Okay. And then how do we know? Or how does anyone know what the most current date is? Like, how do you know that there isn't a stack of invoices somewhere from February that haven't been entered yet? Or someone's on vacation or like whatever the, whatever it may be? Is there a date in any of this that's as accurate through X calendar date or?
So every time we receive an invoice, it has the date that it's been submitted. And so essentially, when an invoice is submitted to us, just because we receive it doesn't mean we accept it. So there's about 10 things that we check for on an invoice before we accept it. We have a responsibility for what's called prompt payment penalties. So when we receive an invoice, we review it to make sure that we can accept it. It has a unique invoice number. It has, it's identified the contractor, the PO, number of different items. Sometimes we reject an invoice. And so if we receive an invoice and it doesn't have the appropriate backup documentation or it doesn't meet one of those criteria, we actually reject the invoice back to the vendor and the vendor has to resubmit the invoice. Sometimes when a vendor resubmits the invoice, they don't want to change their invoice date that they submitted because it's come through their system. We have what's called a date stamp. So when we receive that invoice, it gets stamped, which identifies the date stamp. According to our program management plan, we have what's called a payment approval form. We do a payment approval form for every single invoice that is bond funded. On the payment approval form, it identifies the date on the invoice. It identifies the received date, which is the date that we've accepted it. And then it identifies the date that it's paid. This is reviewed every year as part of the bond program, both financial and performance audit. So they look at all of the different invoices. That information is also captured in our financial system. So if we were to run an expenditure report from our enterprise system, it would show the types of dates that you're asking about.
So on any of the projects that you have in here, roughly how up to date are they? I mean, can you say that they're within two months of everything you've received? Or within three weeks or within?
Definitely. I would say they're probably closer to about three weeks because it does take time. So it's all of our invoices for the bond program, they're approved by the project management team. They're reviewed in-house by the director. They're reviewed for fiscal. They're reviewed for contracts. And then they're reviewed again for facilities. Then they're entered into the financial system where they go through an electronic review. So some may argue that we have almost like a Swiss cheese of approvals. Maybe we have too many. But it was really part of us tightening our controls as a response to the forensic accounting investigation. There are a lot of sets of eyes that go on our invoices before they're paid. However, we're also acutely aware of prompt payment penalties, which is essentially statute that says you have 30 days from the date that you accept and receive an invoice for it to be paid. And so checks are, you got to have them in by Thursday to have a check the following Tuesday. And so that's why I say three weeks. One of the other things that's really fantastic about our online reporting module is sometimes contractors have subcontractors. And they want to know, when was the contractor paid? And all of this information, again, is available at anyone's fingertips at any time. So if they're wondering the status of someone receiving their payment, that information is available.
Okay, that's it. I have a couple of comments at the end.
Thank you so much. Trusty Christian, you had a question?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I just want to go back to, you know, STEGE. And the question would be, with STEGE, CEO fully rebuild school?
So it's a great question. And so I think that's really why we're going through the design build procurement. We have experts that can put together estimates and basically say, this is what we think it will cost. Through our design build procurement, we're reaching out to the contracting community, the experts that are then coming back to say, this is what it would cost to rebuild STEGE to the ed spec. And so we're really excited to see what the market will show so that we can bring that information back to the board.
Okay. And then, and the other question, well, actually, was put out there that STEGE would be built like module, a modular campus? You know, and that's the rumor was being put out there.
So one of the things that we have done is looked at the dollars available and looked at different strategies for the plan for the modernization. We are sending the design build procurement out with the budget and with the education specification for the elementary school and asking the market, what can you do with these dollars and this ed spec to rebuild STEGE? And again, we have been really fortunate. There are a number of incredible design build teams that we've seen come forward to the district. We have found historically that our procurements have been really competitive. We've had a lot of people really interested in doing our projects and competition is good. And also through our partnership with the building trades, we have a project labor agreement. And so there's some really strong relationships and commitments to delivering good value to West Contra Costa. And I'm just, I'm so excited to be able to bring the results of the procurement back to the board.
Okay, cool. And then when I was looking on this, when you were showing the slides, Kennedy and Richmond High. So the, well, I saw like 12 point some million and then I saw Richmond High with two points.
So one of the things that can be a little tricky about Kennedy is the demolition of the 100 and 200 building is actually from the 2016 facilities master plan. And so that's not part of the modernization project. And so in the Kennedy update, you actually see two Kennedy projects. The Richmond High School Critical Needs Project was previously completed. And that was the seismic retrofit of the building and the auxiliary gym. The demolition of the 100 and 200 building right there, the frontage of Kennedy High School, that's the Critical Needs Project. And so that's actually separate from the modernization. So the modernization budget for Kennedy and for Richmond is the same.
Same.
Yes.
All right, that's it.
Any other questions? Trusty Christian, you good?
I'm good.
Thank you so very much, CBOC side and the board side. We're now moving to comments. We'll put three minutes on the clock. Looking at the CBOC side first, any comments? Go ahead, Ms. Hughes.
I'd like to just comment on the portal plan. We talked at our last meeting about getting hands-on experience with this. And the district is looking into it. We were talking about going to a computer lab, one of the high schools. And I'm sure if any of the county, any of the board members would like to join in that when we do it, you'd be very welcome to join in and get some experience with the Colby program and how we look at it. And I think that was all I had to say.
Thank you so much. Any other comments on this item? Go ahead, Mr. Gosling.
Thank you very much. Several items here. On the lake site visit, we really enjoyed that. Was that about three months ago, four months ago? But even during the site visit, we saw absolutely nothing on the other side of the fence line. And now that the parts that we might be interested in seeing have been torn down. This is, I'm just pointing this out. This is the value of site visits in a timely fashion. You can't, we can't build those buildings back up so we can see what you're tearing down and why you were tearing it down. You can't, we can't see what's been going on underground since then. We need to be able to get these site visits done in a timely fashion. Fortunately, we've only got a couple of schools going on right now. I mean, a dozen years ago, we had all kinds of projects going on. So the site business was a lot more difficult. The online portal is a great idea. And I've already discussed this at the CBOC meeting last month. So this is not new information there, but this is for the board and for the record here. Even though the online portal will tell you everything you need to know about the status of our bond program today, it doesn't tell us anything about yesterday. Okay? That is the value of our financial reports being included in our agenda package so they can be archived. If I want to go back three years ago and take a look, you know, report number two and compare it with report number two today, I can't do that with the online portal because it doesn't exist. I understand that some of these things are being addressed, but we need to make sure that we do have access to these financial documents on a regular basis, a monthly basis for our CBOC, for instance. I mean, I've got, I've got copies of these documents dating back decades and they're very handy on there. And I said, again, the online portal is a great thing. The safety on the, on the site visits is critical. Okay, the business I was in for half a century, safety is number one, truly is. And I understand about making sure. Now, out of respect, I actually put on steel toe shoes. I wear long pants. I wear proper types of clothing. I actually went out and bought myself a brand new hard hat and safety vest, but it's got my name all over them too. Because you got a big watermelon head, they don't fit on some of these others. But safety is important. But we used to invite the public on their site visits. Didn't have many takers. We didn't have hardly any CBOC members that were takers on there. But it made it more open and, but it is a problem because you can't have people walking around there that aren't properly dressed. They start going outside of areas where they're not allowed. It is a concern, but it's, and it's a balance that's to be made. To address, oh, see, videos and photographs are very helpful to be able to go out to the community. They don't have to actually be there if they're able to see the videos and the photos. With my 19 seconds left, address something that a trustee record was pointing out. You know, we have the financial audits and the performance audits at the end of the year on the bond program. Okay, the problem we've got is that due to board actions, the scope of both those audits was down scoped tremendously. So the information that's provided on there rarely matches anything that we need or ask for us. It's a problem for us. We are left completely out of the loop. We can't even ask questions. It made crystal clear to us, it'd be done in two seconds, that no matter what we say, these reports are not going to change. Okay? It's, that's not the way to truly audit things. When staff is deciding or the board is deciding how to audit things that they're being audited on, it's just, there's a disconnect there. There has to be a clear break in that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there any comments on this side? I see trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of things. So the first one, which I've said before, is if the board makes a motion and stuff is supposed to come back, I really want it to come back by the date. If it doesn't come back by the date, just say why it's not coming back. It's not done. We don't have time. It's about transparency. It's about being true to our word. It's actually really important that that stuff happens. So I'm really hoping that when motions are made, they're adhered to. And I am okay with an excuse, but I want to hear the excuse. Second is, I didn't know about this prompt payment invoice. So who knew? I was actually going to ask you about like, do you negotiate terms or stuff like that? So didn't know that. The other thing, which I know is going to be difficult to kind of... It's going to be difficult to really get a good answer on this, but I am amazingly curious how Dublin just built a 70,489, 70,489 square foot, brand new high school, brand new, state of the art. They spent $370 million. So why did they spend $370 million? And we couldn't even get a full rebuild for, I can't remember what the cost was. We were like up almost about a billion dollars. So at some point, I'd like some ideas on why there's such a difference in the pricing just of 40, 50 miles away from here. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other comments on the board? Seeing none? Thank you very much. We are now moving to agenda item C. Comments from the Board of Education and the CBOC members. Three minutes. These are your closing comments. And this is also the time at the board session when we do closing comments, we also do future agenda items. So if you want to throw in, hey, in April, let's talk about this at our next joint meeting, this would be the time to do that too. We're going to start with the board side to give you a few minutes to kind of craft your thoughts and your kind of ideas that you want to do it. The board's used to doing this. So we'll go to them first and then we'll pop back over to CBOC. Board, there's three minutes on the clock. If you want to have your time for your closing comments, this is the time, we will last as presidents. Trusty Reckler, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm going to say a lot. It's going to be fast. It may sound mean. It's really not meant to, but I was planning on two minutes. So I just condensed this really tight. So these meetings are an opportunity for the governing board and the CBOC and district staff to work together on oversight and accountability. And I believe there are other agenda topics that would better further that responsibility and that charge. By law, the CBOC exists to review and report on proper expenditure of taxpayer dollars related to bond funds used for school construction and to advise the public as to whether the district is in compliance with Prop 39. To me, that should be the permanent headliner of every joint meeting, namely, how did the district do? In the eyes of the CBOC, did the WCCUSD expense one properly? And did they comply with Prop 39? So that brings me now to this next part, which is by statute, the CBOC is to release a report every year. The last published report that I know of was in 2020. So that was four years that there haven't been reports from the CBOC. What's the reason for that? And what resources does the CBOC need to complete that requirement? I don't think anybody's going to jail for not completing it, but that is the statutory charge of the body. Third, at the last joint meeting on April 8th, there was a report on the forensic accounting investigation of 2016. Several deliverables were discussed and it would have been nice to receive an update on that work, which is the Implementation Task Force Review of the Program Management Plan. There were supposed to be deliverables on June 30th. Were they delivered? Will the board receive Phases 1.5 and 2 review of verification reports by the previously noted September 30, 2024 deadline? Fourth, on January 18th, 2023, the board unanimously adopted a revised CBOC policy, but the policy was to be returned to the governance committee for further review. 20 months have passed. When will the revised policy come forward for consideration? And then finally, my censure was removed. My censure, which removed me from committees, was expired on June 30th. On July 30th, I asked to be reinstated as the liaison to this committee. When will I be restored? I appreciate everyone's work and I hope that these topics that I just spoke about can be agendized for the next joint meeting. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Go ahead, trustee Christian. Wait for the clock, sir. All right, go ahead.
Yes. Just wanted to say thank you to the CBOC and us, the board with the joint meeting, come together, you know, to discuss the issues at hand pertaining to our district. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And also that with the CBOC, you know, also expand this, you know, to other parents or other... or other people um in the Richmond area. Um, not only in Richmond, but you know, because we service from all the way to Hercules, Pinot and so forth. You know, all the way back to El Cerrito, but it, it should be a diversity of people. Uh, having this uh conversation to be part of the CBOC um to make it more inclusive. So um, but this, you know, as we, you know, come together this evening, you know, which we have discussed quite a few of the issues. Um, but a lot needs to be done. And so um, so if, you know, you can reach out to other constituents throughout the whole area that needs to be uh involved with the CBOC. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Lean over, looking over to the CBOC side. Anyone want to go uh first with their closing comments? Does anyone have closing comments? Okay, so we'll go, let me make sure Ms. Jai doesn't have her hand up. She does not. Ms. Humes, we'll go to you first, and then Mr. Gosney. Go ahead, Ms. Humes.
I just wanted to uh give a general um comment on uh sort of a, an overview of what we are dealing with. Uh, there was a question of what's modernization and what, what's bond issue this and bond issue that. In 2015, they set up a program, a, a facilities management program where it was the first time they've ever said a budget and this is how much we're going to spend. A lot of these were critical needs projects, and we've been working on critical needs since then. Now, now, critical need could be your electricity or plumbing, but it could also be something it really needs, like a school. You know, like a, I'm sorry, a science building or something like that. So when you see critical needs, think of, of the bond issues from 2015 up to, and the, when you think of modernization, now some like Lake was rebuilt, but that was done with bond money. We have three sources. We've got bond uh from 2010, you've got D. From 2012, you've got E, and from 2020, you've got R. Critical needs, think of D and E. That's old money. Think of that. When you're talking about modernization, um, her, or Kennedy and Richmond and Stige, think of R, bond measure R. And um, that might help you a little bit in understanding what we're dealing with. And we, we had, these are the only funds available. We've got another bond issue that's tied up that we can't use for several years, but this is where we can take money from now. Okay, that's all.
Thank you so very much for that clarity and that explanation. I really appreciate it. Mr. Gosney?
Thank you very much. You know, if people didn't know me, they might think that I'm just a pretty negative person because everything I s- I talk about seems to be a complaint. And there's a lot of truth to that, but it's not the case here. Uh, I want to go on record, making sure everybody understands. First off, I truly appreciate staff between Louis, Melissa and Ellen. I think they're doing a great job. I've, I've worked with a lot of people in their positions. They are doing a great job, but even more importantly, I like them and they take care of me. That goes a long ways towards me. I appreciate that. The, the reports that they give, they're, they're great. Uh, and I also appreciate the accommodations tonight. You know, this is the first time in a very long time that I feel that I can walk away from here without complaining that I've been silenced again. I do appreciate all of that. And to touch on something that trustee Reckler brought out about Emerald High School, for a very long time, Old Valley High School was the most expensive school in the history of California, $217 million. So when I saw those articles about Emerald High School at 378 million dollars, something like that, it, it, that was just outrageous. But we have to keep in mind, the average home price or home value in that area is $2.4 million. It's a little bit higher than where I live. Uh, it makes a big difference on property taxes coming in when they pass bond measures. Strange thing is, it only had, they only have 970 students at that school. And that's, that's, that's just unbelievable on there. But yeah, how come the, how come it's so expensive? Three Olympic-sized swimming pools? That makes a difference. They've got a little theater that makes El Cerrito High School's little theater look like a, a garage thing. Uh, they poured some money into that. Uh, and all we can do is just sit back and salivate, you know, wish we had something like that. But every school that we've built here, as soon as we finished El Cerrito High School, I said, man, that's the best school in the Thomas Mahal. Shortly afterwards, we had Deanser. You had El Cerrito students that went to Deanser, but as soon as it opened, it says, man, I wish we had a school this nice. It's always going to be that way. But uh, I, I still don't understand about Emerald High School. That is a lot of money. Thank goodness I don't have to pay for it. But thank you again. I appreciate these meetings. These are great meetings. We've got, we've got a lot done here tonight.
Thank you so very much. Anyone else on the CBOC side? Seeing none, we'll go to the president for your final comments.
Thank you. So uh, President Smith Foles, thank you. Um, Dr. Hurst, thank you. Trustee um Reckler and trustee Christian, thank you guys for being here uh and for doing these um uh meet, joint meetings twice a year. Staff, you guys are awesome. Thank you as well. Um, my priority has been and will always be to get to 11 members. I feel pretty strongly about, you know, the fact that if we don't have people, we don't have oversight. So trustee Reckler, I totally agree with you. We need to get, we need to catch up on our reporting, our annual reporting, that is our, is our critical responsibility of the, of the committee. Um, but I fear not prioritizing people and not prioritizing having a robust bench on uh, on the committee that we may fall back into, uh, we may stumble again, you know? And so I think that for me, just getting, getting fully um, fully staffed up, if you will, on our side uh is going to serve us in the long run. Um, so people first, I think um, part of that is, is what we've talked about tonight, which is, you know, putting uh, encouraging folks to join through um, fulfilling, offering fulfilling opportunities. And, and what I think I've heard is, is site visits being one of, you know, kind of the tip of the spear in that regard. So we're going to double down on that, look to see how we may be able to uh invite some of our uh members of the public and other stakeholders close to these projects to, to visit those, um, to have those site visits as well. Um, and um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. I just want to thank everybody for, for their time and uh, and engagement. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hurst, do you have anything? Okay, um, staff, do you have anything? No? Okay. Um, I just want to say thank you very much for this meeting. I enjoyed, I enjoy our joint meetings. I enjoy listening to the CBOC meetings. I think that tonight we have come to some agreements. One is that April's meeting will be at the FOC building. Um, two, that site visits are critical. I think that both sides have agreed to that. And communication is key. So however we can get the communication out, I think that it would be a benefit to, to your point, building the bench, right? Making sure that we have enough people, but also building the bench. Ms. Humes has already said, listen, I'm timing out, but I'm looking for someone now. Like, I'm, I'm actively doing that. I think that um, personal outreach is always the best. I think that people don't know what the CBOC does, but if they come and listen, they will find something that kind of piques their interest. There's something inside this big organization that's called CBOC that piques someone's interest. It may not be the reporting, it may be the site visits. It may be, okay, this is what the bond R is, and this is what we can do with it, and what does that look like? It may be the architecture part of like, okay, here it's coming back. I think that one of the things that I enjoy most is coming to the CBOC meetings and seeing the projects over time through the pictorials and then being able to, to your point, go to the campuses. And I can see Hercules being built because I take my kids to Hercules High School, so I can see that. Um, I think that if we continue to work together, I think it only builds a stronger CBOC and board relationship. I think it's critical that the board is informed about what happens at the CBOC and the board has a tutorial, I would say. Some type of um, education about what happens in this department is always a benefit because then that helps us make very logical decisions from the dais because it gives us more information than less. I want to thank everybody so very much for coming tonight. Um, oh, before my 53 seconds is gone, I would love that one pager that you guys were talking about. Bring some copies to the board meeting. Sometimes we have 100 people here, right? So bring some copies and just have them here. We can bring them every week. We can put them in the little cabinet and just bring them out and put them on the informational table just so we can, we never know. We never know who's in the room. We never know if it'll pique someone's interest, so that's a way of making sure that we're helping with advertising. Okay, everyone, we are now, thank you so very much. We are now moving to item D, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting. The next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for September the 11th at Dejane Middle School. We will see you all then. We are now officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone.